Okay, please settle. 11th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Councillor George Gokin followed by the singing of the national anthem then the Kageyan de Oro march.
May Hapon sa atun tanan, let's bow our heads and make the sign of the cross in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Most gracious and loving Father, we praise, honor, and adore you. We thank you for the gift of life and we ask for the forgiveness of our sins. Lord, we ask you with faith, without doubt from your spiritual guidance and grant us peace in our session today. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, may your peace be in our hearts, your grace be in our words, your love be in our hands, and your joy be in our souls. Lord, we are nothing without you. We need your blessings in accordance to your will. We thank you for the recovery of our economy and giving us peace and unity. Bless this beloved city and your people. Help us to listen before speaking, help us to fully understand, help us to value and appreciate the ones we are about to meet. Almighty God, continue to remind us all that all that we do today, all that we are about to accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen. In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Nakababayan ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang mahibing, pero sa siyahanan, palawng napuso sa likod ko'y buhay. Luwang-himilang, kaya ng mahibing, sa manlulupin, ikapasi sigil. Sanayatang, tutok sa siwayan, sa nami kawagaw, ayunatang, tula ka'win sa kagaya ni namahal. Ang isakap, kaka'wan, huwag na kuwainan, eh eh. Ang ituwi, na palaw ngayakaynan, pa may liba't eh eh. Luwang na palaw ngangwar, habing paksikka, huwag ngamit sa bibigbo. Ang niyayana, parayong ami, ang palakay ng kahil sa'yo. Have a long, dear honor, our brother, beloved city. Thy mountain, sleepers, glades, and cities thy people, tend, and happy. Have a long, dear honor, our brother, beloved city. Dear singing voices, in our voice forever, to hear still hear. Run and pray to the well of promise, bring me a walk of heart and say, "In salvation, we'll be on the cross to serve you forever free." The walking, the leashing of fire, loving earth, and passionless, a deep, deep ocean, a strong heart, there is place for you and my heart. Have a beautiful grace upon, beloved city. The ring we find, the darling feel, thy banner apply to flowers and fields. Have a beautiful grace upon, beloved city. To forever be forever, the Lord, our brother, we live.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the first district councilors, honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, honorable Roger Jaberday, honorable J.R. Pasqual, honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, honorable Romeo V. Calizo, honorable George S. Gokin, honorable Jose P.P.S. Abut Jr., honorable Malburn E. Sparsia. For the second district councilors, honorable Ibuna Yasini B. Mano, honorable Maria Lourdes Isgaani, honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, honorable James K. Judith II, honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, honorable Z. G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members, honorable Jan Lam Es Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay president, and honorable John Michael Alceno, City SK Federation president. Teres Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom, the 11th regular session is hereby certified. Majority floor leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor, Jocelyn Bebot Rodriguez. Good afternoon to everyone, to our colleagues in the council, friends from the media, fellow Kageyanons, mayong hapon. I move Madam Presiding Officer to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on September 12, 2022, and to consider the forwarding of this copy to every member as the reading itself.
Any second? An objection. A here-nan motion is hereby carried.
We likewise move for the approval of this set minutes of meeting.
Second, objection. Here-nan, motion is hereby carried.
With the kind indulgence of our colleagues, Madam Presiding Officer, and with the consent of the Presiding Officer, we have two guests from the gallery who are representing the city of Kageyan de Oro in the quest for Mrs. Universe Philippines 2022 and Misters of Filipinas. They are both here, present, and, yeah, Mrs.
Mrs, Mrs.
Why are you very interested, Councillors? Anyway, could we ask the indulgence of our colleagues, Madam Presiding Officer, to consider their presence and appear before the August body? I move to suspend the rules, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second, an objection. A here-nan motion is hereby carried, rule suspended.
First is according to her presence before, in the gallery, of course, earlier, we have Mrs. Grace, Mary Grace Trejo, or otherwise, or popularly known as Mary Sharapova. Kindly, this is for Mrs. Universe Philippines 2022. You can join us and kindly use the podium near Councillor Atchas.
Mrs. Universe?
Yes.
Please, you're well, you're acknowledged.
Hi ma'am, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Grace, aka Mary Sharapova, and I'm a social influencer here in Patag, and then I am about to represent CDO, Miss Amis Oriental.
Welcome to the session.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Anything that you would like to express before this August body?
Pardon, sir?
Any words that you would like to share with us or why you are here before this August body?
I'm here because I am about to ask for the sponsorship or the support, yeah.
Yes, I saw Councillor Atchas nodding.
When are you leaving for Manila?
On this coming September 23, I am about to go to Manila, and then 25, starting our activities there until October 2, the coronation night, the final.
Okay, actually, Mrs. Universe is a blogger. Actually, her name...
Ms. Vineiers.
Ms. Vineiers, yeah.
I got viral and then I interviewed pa ako sa JMA and then other stuff.
Councillor Gurley would like to be recognized, Madam Presiding Officer.
Of course, of course. Councillor Gurley Balaba, you're recognized.
Mayong hapon sa tanan, Madam Chair, our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez, is this the first time that Kageyan de Oro City will be participating in the Mrs.?
Yes.
What's this, Mrs. Universe? Is this the first time?
First time, I guess. When I asked them, it's first time. And when I asked also the coordinators here in CDO, and they said it's first time.
Ah, okay. So you're the first candidate from Kageyan de Oro, Mrs. Universe? And hopefully, we pray, no?
Thank you.
That you will get the crown and make us all proud and be the first Mrs. Universe Kageyan de Oro, from Kageyan de Oro.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you. If you want to help, you know, this is her first time, you can help, Councillors, know, support her. And you know what, she's a sexy Mrs. Universe. Mrs. Universe, how many children do you have?
I had three children.
Oh, three, ha? This is an inspirational workout, good day mga dagko. So we'd like to, what, good luck?
Thank you so much.
And hopefully, you will win and bring us the crown.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, majority?
Yes, thank you, thank you. We also have our candidate for Misters of Filipinas, this is Floral?
Mister?
Yes, we have Mr. Eljan Taguba from Abelanosa, Kageyan de Oro City.
Welcome, Mr. Taguba. So this is Mr. Philippines? Is this Mr. Philippines, contest?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Before I speak, good afternoon to our presiding Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebot Rodriguez and to our 20th City Council. I'm here to ask your support, help and support. I am Eljan Taguba, I am 24 years old. I live in barangay 17, Kageyan de Oro City, and I am representing Kageyan de Oro City, which is the first-class city. And I will be living in this coming September 23, and our coronation will be held in Resorts World Manila this coming October 16.
Okay, so, oh, solicitation, ah? You send your solicitation letters to all the councilors. You have to help, you have to help him and Mrs. Universe.
Councillor Ebby is also nodding.
Ebby, Councillor Ebby, yeah? Oh, Councillor Pasqual is not here. Where's Councillor Pasqual? Anyway, we wish you all the best, know, wish you the luck and hope you'll make it in Manila with Mr. Philippines. Padala sila letter to help you with the expenses, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyway, I move Madam Presiding Officer to lift the suspension of the rules.
Second, objection. A here-nan motion is hereby carried, rules lifted.
On special report, we only have one member in the person of Councillor James K. Judith II. On, as regards compliance of the National Building Code provisions on construction of comfort rooms, we will ask the chair to recognize Councillor Judith.
Councillor James Judith, you are recognized.
Sa atong tinahod nga halangdung bisimayod, Jocelyn Bebot Rodriguez, sa atong tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseho, sa atong mga bisita, naadya sa gallery, sa membro, sa prensa, sa atong pinanggang katauhan sa dakbayan, sa Kageyan de Oro, sa inyong tanan, maupay. Madam Chair, sa atong pag sugod, pwede pa tugutan sa kunin niyo, magpakita sa kunin niyo sa atong screen ang gamay lang, itawag na atong shorts, kabahin sa atong sugyot nga resolution nga atong gi-submit or gi-file sa buhatan sa atong City Council secretary. Boss Torx? Bainte.
Councillor Ganey, ready na.
Wala'y sounds. Why sounds, boss Torx? Wala'y audio. Wala, disconnect na ko diya ang building code.
Councillor J. Pasqual, you recognize? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Acknowledge. Delete, aribal.
I acknowledge the presence of Councillor J. Pasqual.
Madam Chair, here-nan eh. So, nasayad man si Councillor George Gokin sa wala pa kita na konsehal, nagda-sun kita ug, sulat ka niya or mulo, kabahin aning sa implementasyon sa provision sa atong National Building Code. Pero subo lang paman doon, kay atong panahon, wala na saan ako napalo, ako tungod po sa mga legal requirements sa City Legal Office. Karoon kay natagaan kita sa kagayunan, naanakita din ni uban sa atong tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseho, but na ako gyod nga hingusgan nga kinalan, tagaag pagpatuman ang atong mga provision sa National Building Code. Kay kung mabandayan, batakan man gyod nga adunay CR sa matag ka establishmento. Ma stand-alone man or suklip siya sa usaka arcade or usaka dako nga gambalay, gani ang mga restaurants dapat na ikaw galingon nga CR, delay magsalig sa mall. Isa na ang batakan nga provision sa National Building Code. Og, ang mga remittance counters or centers, mga bangko, nga adunay waiting time, matutpa sa National Building Code, adunay yapoy CR. Makita na ko sagad bali nga nabantayan na to, kay naghihiwa naman tag audit sa mga establishmento, ngawaan na sunod ini, 84 kabok ang akong gi-lista na wala nagtuman sa National Building Code. Kasagara din is akong listahan 84 mga bangko. Kay mga bangko, labina ang ilang mga klienteng taas kay panahon sa itawag nga waiting time, pero kung buot na magpabuhagay o motubag sa ilang personal nga panginanlan, wala tao sila ikatuhan, i-repair pa sila dito sa lain nga mga lugar, o baka aba nga passport chain aron dito sila makatubag sa ilang personal nga panginanlan. Batakan man unta na siya, Madam Chair, pero matingala ka, giun sa suwong ano nakalusot ni mga tawanan, nakalusot ni mga establishmento. Naapod, nakita na to sa atong observasyon, sa atong finding, sa 84 na ay mga CR, pero ilang idalo sa ilang mga customer, sa ilang mga klienteng batakan man unta. Ang ako lang kulang naman siguro sa pagduot sa atong balawod. Obitaw nga, delay ordinan sa ang atong sugyot, konti re, sugyot lang resolution, magtegayon taog audit, o baka inspeksyon sa tanan nga mga establishmento, kung naisubay ba or natunong bagyo, ilabang gituman ang kalagdaan naadya sa atong National Building Code. Ani raman, kay ako sakto to nagbungat si Majority floor leader, ganina si Ayana Kaya nga, meron personal gali ni nga kasinatiyan ni Attorney Judith, oo, tinod. Kay pila na kay gayon nga gabati ako nga buto na ko magpabuhagay o motubag sa kong personal nga panginanlan, nakita ko na ako adunay CR ang maong establishmento, pero delay pagin nila ingon nga pagbigyan tangatagaan tugutan na nila adunay access sa ilang CR. So ako gregla man na nadagha na akong naaway tungod lang ano. Tungod sa nakita na to na CR, pero ilang idalo, unsa re hinungdan. Nganong kitagaan man to na to sila kining building permit, ngawaan man da sila CR nga sakto. Kung naang magali CR, delay man da nila tugutan ang ilang mga customer, ang ilang mga patron, ang ilabali mga klienteng gamit sa ilang CR. Salaktod nga pagasturya, Madam Chair, ang ato lang katuyuan sa atong sugyot resolution, maong magtegayon o ginspeksyon, labina nga panguluhan sa atong ubo, ako mismo, mangamot, na kumahimo, muuban kita, tugutan kita, ngamuban, para kung subayo na to tong naanakuy gihimo nga initial nga 84 kabok ng mga establishmento, na wala nagtuman sa maong kalagdaan sa atong National Building Code. Morakato, Madam Chair, dadlang salamat, og astang Kageyan de Oro.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Attorney James Judith. Yes, Councillor Alceno, Michael Alceno.
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, Honorable Jocelyn Bebot Bautista Rodriguez.
Aku pleto man.
Good afternoon, of course, to the members of this 20th City Council. Good afternoon, of course, to the members of this 28th City Council. Friends from the media, hello Cagayanons, may hapon ka na atong tanan. Guapo kayang presentation pod ni Councilor James Judith, no? Kaya musulotag sa delay, tawag magod na. Sa tuwang kalawasan, di man na to matag na. Si may ingon nga 30 minutes, monanisia may tabo. But klaro pod sa tuwang National Building Code nga kikinahanglan ang usaka building na aguze CR. Delay pwede may tabo nga wala CR Madam Presiding Officer. But there are instances, no, let's say for example sa banks nga delay sila pag magpa-CR kung naapori sila 'yung mga rason tungod daw sa safety reasons. Kay malabyan doon nila ilang bolt, makabisado sa kliyente, matod pa sa akong nadungan, no, nga unsa plastada sa bangko. Unsa asa dapit ang bolt nakalocate, asa pwede sila musulod. Munai lahangatan aon sa asa bangko. But klaro pod sa tuwang balawad, no, nga kinahanglan na ay CR kay malay ni mo matag na. Insakto kayo kay we need to strike a balance between safety sa atong bangko kay kung ugali na ay mahitabo. Ngay na na gi-survey ugali, magpasumangil lang ang mag-CR pero gi-survey day unsa plastada sa bangko. Kung na ay mahitabo ugali na na ngakrimin, daku kayo nga problema sa atong dakbayan. At the same time, we should also address sa mga gapanginanglanon sa ato ang mga kliyente. And that is why we need to come in Madam Presiding Officer to look into this also. But rest assured that our office of the building official have nagtrabaho pod sila kay before the issuance of business permit, naapoy ginatawag nga annual inspection fee nga ginapangulekta Madam Presiding Officer. This annual inspection fee naglangkob ni sa mga requisitos nga kung unsa nakalagda sa building code kung nafollow ba sa maong establishmento. Sakto ang gisulti ni Councilor James Judith nga na ay mga establishmento nga na ay CR pero gadumili sila. In fact na ay usaka 24/7 nga tindahan nga naasi, supposed to be CR pero delay sila ga pa-CR kay usahay gay convert nila nga storage area, gamay na lang kayo lang CR pero wala nag sulti ang balawad nga pwede ni mo na iconvert. Kinahanglan, you have to follow that, you have to follow that. And I will be happy, no, that the report of Councilor James Judith will be referred to the Committee on Public Works. So that we could see to it that they are not only following the guidelines as stated in the building code of the Philippines, but they have also implemented kung unsa ang ugali para unta sa katauhan Madam Presiding Officer. I have here under section 301 of building permit, paragraph 2 A the ancillary permits, no, kinahanggan gyod ang naa sila plumbing permit. And sa plumbing documents, dagan kining gipang plaster nila nga gipangayoon gyod under sa building code of the Philippines, locational plan and site plan of minimum scale of 1 is to 2,000. Plumbing plans, layouts and details a minimum of 1 is to 50. Legend and general notes, dagan kayon mga requisitos Madam Presiding Officer, ogga klaro gyod ug tataw nga gikinahanglan gyod ang CR. Ang ato lang atong matabangan Madam Presiding Officer, at least mapukaw baka ha. Ang ato ang mga naasa business sector nga magpagamit sila. At the same time, we need to strike a balance, no, lagi sa katong ingon ako ang safety pod nila ang ilang gikabalaka. Ana lang Madam Presiding Officer, thank you and good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Councilor Seno. Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, katonggi ingon ni Councilor Seno, katupitong ang mga bangko kinalan we need to strike a balance katong sila security pero posible man sa siguro kay naa may mga bangko ba is ako baling personal nga kining kining evaluation sa kanang audit at sama sa DPP naa sila ikaw galingon nga CR. Usaka musulod ka to ditong sa ilang main gyod, musimangka naa sa ilabitong pahagdaan na paino sa ilang second floor. Dito sa ubos nga bahay naa sila ay CR. Sa PS Bank pod sa Velez, kung gusto ka mag-CR, musakas ka sa ilang second floor. So, onya pod sa PNB at bangsa Savior, nagyapon sila ay CR. So ang ako lang hangi onga tanan mga bangko na kaya magali ni nila, nituman sila sa kalagdaan bali sa National Building Code. So, kinalan masabot pod na ko katong naan security reasons pero siguro sakto to si Councilor Seno nga ang balance. Pero siguro, we can, we could come up with a happy compromise pagpatuman sa balawad para mapagbigyan pod nato ang atong mga customer, ang atong mga patrons, ang ato bali mga klienteng personal nga panginanlan. So, pero nahimo aning tulok ang mga bangko nga ako ng gi-sight, Madam Chair. Dagat salamat.
Thank you, Councilor Attorney James, Councilor Bernice Parsha, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, sa atong mga kaubang konsihal may hapon. Madam Chair, gamay lang, just to add and support Attorney James Judith. Naisguta na mga bangko, also, we are also aware that there's a lot of 24/7 convenience stores now that are offering drinks and food. And actually, naagaling ga pauso karoon nga convenience store nga pwede yo kamukaon diya mismo sa ilang establishment. Suwerte lang tong uban ng mga convenience store nga aba sa mga gasoline station. Kay sometimes pagmukaon ka dito, kung manghihi ka or na mag-CR ka, makagamit ka sa ubang gasoline station. But sometimes naapoy uban mga gasoline station nga ginalak nila ang ilang mga CRs. Pero nagyapoy uban na to nga mga convenience stores nga technically wala gyod sila ay CR. And I think if an establishment is offering food and also drinks, I think usapod dapat sa requirements gyod nga napoy gyod sila ay CR, Madam Chair. And I think this is a very good nga resolution nga. Atong tanan oni, maybe for some moradi keni siya major problem, I'm sure na napoy mi ingon ah kagamay ano nga problema. But, you know, like us, mga diabetic, every now and then, masiikag panghihi gyod. Tapos, wala kay mapadulngan ang convenience niya ba. If any establishment nga naagaling customer nga musulod or naagaling something nga mohulat siya di ug dugay, for me, Madam Chair, I think kailangan gyod na aguze CR. Mora na siya Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Bernice Parsha. Actually, we have to review on that. It is very insensitive for these buildings, these banks na delay maaccommodate. Health is always a priority. Ang katodeng mga elders, katodeng nga to ditong maghulat maka, if you are in the bank, maghulat maka, simo numero. So asam sila paino, you mean to say magawaas pa sila para ditto na, manghihi na, I don't think so. So, we have to review this and refer this to the committee. And make sure that this will be implemented strictly para manisa. If this is the national law, then we have to implement properly sa atong dakbayan sa Cagayan de Oro. Kay I find it very, I find it weird nga nakakaestablishment dahil hindi ka pa hihi. I mean, it doesn't, ano, it doesn't make sense. Kay anywhere you go, anytime you go, then there's always be available CR for these people who are into inside this business establishment. Okay, let us refer that to the committee and make sure nga mainspeksyon na and that make sure na ang atong mga establishmento delay magistrikto kad delay magpagamit because of security reason. Health is always the utmost importance, okay? Thank you.
May we now proceed to the agenda proper?
Yes, just please proceed, my Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Iron Mark Nakaya.
Thank you. So item number one, Madam Presiding Officer, is proposed resolution number 2022-83, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 13, the city. Its ordinance number 022-2022, series of 2022, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 629,353 pesos with the information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. Move, we will ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Roger Abada.
Councilor Roger Abada, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Majority Floor, our honorable Vice Mayor, my colleagues in the 20th City Council. Friends, good afternoon. Considering that all required documents for the application of such act fighting is in order.
Tepa, tepa, tepa. Please, please, please guide Majority Floor Leader.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I thought I was sorry.
Okay, okay, okay.
I was, I was.
Okay.
I prepared.
Ah, sige, please proceed.
Okay, considering that the proposed resolution 2022-83, all requirements and documents are in order, I move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to dispense second, move to approve second final reading.
Second objection. I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number two is proposed resolution number 2022-84, returning to barangay council of barangay Tumpagon, the city, its ordinance. Excited kayo siya? Its ordinance number 01-2022, series of 2022, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 5,227,404 pesos with the information that said ordinance is operative its in it entirety. Another member of the Committee on barangay Affairs, Councilor George Go King, may we ask the Chair to recognize?
Councilor George Go King, you are recognized?
Dagat salamat, Majority Floor. I move to approve the proposed resolution number 2022-84, Madam Chair.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any objection? I have a second objection. I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Omnibus motion for items three and four with the same subject matter. Three, proposed resolution number 2022-85, returning to the Sanggoyang Kabataan of barangay Taglimao, the city, its resolution number one, series of 2022. And four, proposed resolution number 2022-86, returning to the Sanggoyang Kabataan of barangay number 19, the city, its resolution number 1-4, series of 2022, covering their respective annual budgets for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes with the information that said resolutions are operative in its entirety. May we ask the Chair to recognize the SK President, Councilor John Michael Seno.
Okay, Councilor John Michael Seno, you're recognized?
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Considering it is gone through the local finance committee and everything is in order, I move to approve the resolution number 2022-85 and resolution number 2022-86.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number five is proposed resolution number 2022-87, adapting the order of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BR case number 2022-03 entitled Mr. Andrew T. Pauron, Complainant versus Punong barangay Lucilo B., Ligaspi of barangay 15, Respondent for violation of Aray 6713, dismissing the said case for lack of interest and failure to prosecute on the part of the complainant. We will ask the Chair to recognize the birthday boy, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas.
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, the birthday boy, you are recognized. Kumana be a birthday?
Kumana, kumana. One week man, one week.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, move to approve proposed resolution number 2022-87.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection. I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number six is proposed ordinance number 2022-28, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Oi representing the city government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into unsigned memorandum of cooperation with the United Nations Human Settlements Program, UN Habitat, covering the implementation of technology-based plastic 3R solutions and integrated livelihood projects of the Materials Recovery Facility, MRF Cooperative in Cagayan de Oro City, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. We ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Roger Abada.
Councilor Roger Abada, you recognize?
Okay, considering that all the requirements of proposed ordinance 2022-28 are in order, I move that the proposed ordinance will be approved favorably.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, motion to approve ordinance number 2022-28 is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? An objection? Motion is here by carried.
Number seven is proposed ordinance number 2022-29, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the city government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into unsigned memorandum of agreement Mowa with the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, Region 10 B410, represented by its Regional Director Tuduro A. Bakulod Junior and the Danau Lake Fisher Folk Association, represented by Mr. Fidelio P. Makarandan, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the Blixigla sa Ilog at Lawa Basil program at Lake Danau, barangay Pagalungan, the city. For a period of one year under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, we ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Jay Pasqual.
Councilor Jay Pasqual, you recognize?
May hapon, Madam Chair, since everything is in order, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2022-29.
Any second? Ah, okay. Inquiry, Councilor Ebby Mano, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to everyone in this August body, good afternoon. I just have an inquiry regarding the memorandum of agreement found in Appendix H, page 95, article 5 in the duration. The project shall be for a period of one year, starting January to December 2021. Madam Chair?
Hold on, let me check, okay? H?
Appendix H, page 95, article 5, duration for the memorandum of
Article 5, okay?
The project shall be for a period of one year, starting January to December, but the year is 2021.
Correction, no?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So until 23, right?
As corrected, Madam Presiding Officer, to effectively start at the instant of the approval.
Of the approval, so that's going to be 2023?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, correction, Mr. Secretary. Okay, so let's proceed.
The pending motion is for the approval.
Okay, any second? Any objection? Motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? An objection? Motion is here by carried.
Number eight is proposed ordinance number 2022-30, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the city government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into unsigned memorandum of agreement Mowa with the Department of Health Center for Health Development, Northern Mindanao, represented by its director for Jose R. Liancona Junior, M.D., M.P.H., Ceso, covering the grant of one COVID-19 allowance Oka for the health workers assigned at the GRBora General Hospital under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. We will ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Maria Lourdes Gani.
Councilor Lourdes Gani, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2022-30.
Second.
Any second? Objection? Okay, Councilor Bernie Parsha, please, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mangutana lang ko, Madam Chair, kung munamani ang tubag sa katong mga dugay ng mulo, nga nangayos Oka. Then number two, karumpama ni nato na tagaan ugmaa, pero katubang mga previews nga partgyapon sa lisma, apil pa ba gyapon sila, Madam Chair? Mora lang, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Lourdes Gani, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair, actually, this was what your special report was all about, no? This is one of the requirements katumuwa nga between the chief executive This is one of the requirements katumuwa nga between the Chief Executive and Department of Health. Ang pangutana una is noni siya ng tubag, and ni Kaduha, maapiltanan basta na-download ang names katung naaffected during sa atong mga tanan health workers sa JR Borah during the time sa pandemic. So, as of Karoon, ang, that's between January to June, na-download na nila, and we're still waiting para mahumanget siya until August of this year.
So we will be able to, ano na?
Yes, ma'am, ma release na din siya pag...
By October.
Uh, hopefully.
Yeah, okay. Sounds, uh, thank you very much, Councilor Lourdes Gani. So we will make it clear, thatong job orders para di na sige magpangutana, so it will be downloaded soon, pag makompleto na ang listings sa names. Anyway, let us proceed, Majority Floor Leader. A second, second. Any objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? An objection? Motion is here by carried.
Number nine is proposed ordinance number 2022-31, approving the preliminary subdivision development plan, PDSP, of the Adeline, a five-floor residential building condominium project located in barangay Oswagand, the city, with an area of 1,245 square meters, containing 118 units, under PD957 for mid-cost, as applied for by the Iscalicas Land OPC, represented by Manuel L. Iscalicas Jr., subject to compliance of the conditions imposed by the City Housing and Urban Development Department, should City Engineers Office and City Housing Board. We ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Edgar Cabanlas.
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Move to approve the said resolution.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion, ordinance number 2022-31 is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? Any? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
For the next three measures, Madam Presiding Officer, this has been the, the proposed measures that Councilor Roger Abada has been preparing for, for today.
That is much awaited.
So I'm just advancing so that he will not be surprised.
Okay.
Number 10 is proposed ordinance number 2022-32, approving the application of Mister Yotropio Louvius, cockpit manager in Dahagi Square Garden, barangay in Dahagi, the city, for a permit to conduct a four-win special cockfight at the said cockpit on September 26 to 28, 2022, as part of the fest celebration of barangay in Dahagi, the city. We ask the Chair to recognize Councilor Abada.
Councilor Roger Abada, you're finally recognized.
Thank you, Majority Floor and Madam Chair. Considering that the application for derby as proposed in ordinance number 2022 are in order under PD449 gambling law, 1974, section 4, section 5, paragraph D, Madam Chair is in order, I move to approve such ordinances, Majority Chair.
Any second? An objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
That's a subject to move to approve second final reading.
Second? An objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number 11 is proposed ordinance number 2022-33, approving the application of Mister Yotropio Louvius, cockpit manager in Dahagi Square Garden, barangay in Dahagi, the city, for a permit to conduct a four-stag derby at the said cockpit on October 7, 2022. Again, for Councilor Abada's recognition.
Councilor Roger Abada, you're recognized.
The proposed ordinance number 2022-34 has complied all the requirement under the said law. I move for the approval of such ordinance.
Second? An objection? Point of inquiry, Councilor Joey Abu, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all the members of this August body and to all present in this session. I noticed that in item, item number nine, we are issuing a special permit...
Nine?
For cockfighting.
Eleven.
I'm sorry, in ten.
Oh, ten, ten, okay.
For, also to be held in Dahagi for their fiesta celebration. I would agree to the statement of the good Councilor Abada a while ago, that it is in compliance with the law, because one of the, one of the instances where cockfighting may be held is when there is a local fiesta. But with this item, Madam Chair, it is also prayed that a special permit for be issued by this August body, authorizing also this cockfighting to be held, or derby to be held in barangay in Dahagi on August 7, which falls on a weekday. October 7, October 7, which falls on a weekday. Now, just a point of inquiry, Madam Chair, because under PD449, it defines there, which is the national law governing cockfighting laws. It defines their cockfighting, which states it embrace and mean to commonly known game or term cockfighting derby. Also, it does not make any distinction whether what is a derby or what is a cockfighting. Also, in this law, under PD449, paragraph 5, as mentioned a while ago, uh, section 5, paragraph D, as mentioned a while ago, that cockfighting may only be allowed during Sundays, legal holidays, and when there is a local fiesta for not more than three days. Um, also, in our qualified, uh, qualified ordinance of Cagayan de Oro, section 736, paragraph A, which defines also cockfighting, which adapts, adapted the same definition provided under PD449. Now, in the case of Tan versus Perea, decided by the Supreme Court, it states that while RA 7160, or otherwise known as the Local Government Code, now governs as to the authority of the Sangunian to authorize or license establishment, operations, maintenance of cockpit, it is still subject to the limitations laid down in PD449, which is section 5, paragraph D, as mentioned a while ago. And, uh, in fact, the Games in Amusement Board issued a, an opinion as to enactment of an ordinance that authorizes the holding of local derbies on weekdays. It states there, among other, among other things, as to the opinion regarding establishment, operation, and maintenance of cockpit, as well as promulgation of rules and regulations governing cockpit. It states here, if I may be allowed to quote, "Following the enactment of the Local Government Code and the subsequent abolition of Philippine Game Fall Commission in 1993, it becomes undisputed that the jurisdiction over local cockfights is divulged upon the LGUs." So na na sa LGU ang operation. Of course, through the Sangunian concern as to the maintenance operation. But it also stated that, however, local government units are not permitted to enact their own governing ordinance without regard to the cockfighting law of 1974, which generally governs cockfighting in the Philippines. Also further, it stated that therefore, as mandated under the Local Government Code of 1991, local government units can enact ordinance governing local government, uh, local cockfights, but it shall do so within the bounds defined and restricted by the cockfighting law of 1974, or PD449. Now, again, as provided under the said law, section 5, paragraph D, it only stated there the days in which cockfighting may be held in the Philippines. And this application, I believe, is not found in the said days that we may be allowed to conduct cockfighting. Now, may I ask if we have already approved the previous ordinance, item number three, for the cockfighting to be made during the fiesta celebration of in Dahagi? When then, why is there a necessity to issue again another license to conduct cockfighting, which falls on a weekday and not found under PD449? That's all, Madam Chair.
Councilor Roger Abada, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Councilor Joey Abu. That's a very good observation, but the Tan, uh, the Tan T. Auey vs. Pirinya is different issue, that is the issuance of a licensed permit of the cockfighting. Here is the, um, in Dahagi Square Garden, it's only the franchise license cockpit, and they are asking for a permit, special permit for holding a cockfight, derby. So you read section 4 also, why October 7, if you read, in item 11, if you read section 4 of PD449, all provincial city and municipal, uh, municipality, no, can, uh, conduct cockfight in agricultural, commercial, industrial fair, or exposition for a similar period, not less than three days. So, uh, October 7 might be, might fall, uh, there, you know, it might be a special holiday on, uh, in Dahagi. So, it's only one day, there one day. So, uh, it is consistent with the existing law, Madam Chair and my colleagues. Please go over with section 5 and section 4 of PD449.
Section, again? What is mentioned there? Can you please check?
All provincial, city, or municipality can conduct a cockfight, even agricultural, commercial, industrial fair, or exposition, or any similar period, uh, similar activities for a period not less than three days, not more than three days, such a thing.
Councilor Joey Abu, you are recognized.
For the record, Madam Chair, section 4 is only, touches definitions under PD449. But I also have read this, this, the one mentioned by the good counselor a while ago, also can be found under section 5, paragraph D. Now, as what was mentioned, where does this application fall? Agricultural, industrial, commercial? Because carnival? Where does this fall for, for us? But again, as, as I mentioned a while ago, you mentioned, the, the good counselor mentioned that the Supreme Court decision cited a while ago talks about franchise. But again, the Supreme Court said that even, even though that the local government units can enact ordinances relating to maintenance, operations, and regulations of cockfight, cockfighting, it must not be in contravention or would supersede the national law, which is PD449. And under PD449, there is no mention there that, uh, cockfighting may be held other than those days mentioned. So may I ask the good counselor about his comment about this?
Councilor Roger Abada? Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, you're recognized.
While I agree with Councilor Roger Abada, that there are some provisions of the law that would support the introduction of the proposed measure, which is pending before us, Madam Presiding Officer, but there are also, uh, points that Counselor Joey Abu would like to raise, and it should be reconciled. And may I ask the Chair to declare a five-minute recess? And maybe perhaps Counselor Abu and Counselor Abada can reconcile these laws that they are trying to brought forward to the council.
Okay, one more thing I'd like to manifest, no? Because my name is here, is, I am endorsing, no? Endorsement of, uh, City Vice Mayor Joselyn Rodriguez. I'd like to manifest that I'm not endorsing, I am referring to the committee. Uh-oh, Mister Secretary, please take note of that. So, okay. Let's have a five-minute recess. Session resume. So what is the pleasure of the body? So, what is the pleasure of the body? Uh, Counselor? Okay, your Counselor Roger Abada, you are recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I was just, I was unable to mention that this schedule of October 7, this is an exposition of all breeders, other places that could be held in Indahag Square Garden. So, stag derby, meaning these are these are, what, these are fighting cocks below 1-year-old? Like, this derby, this derby open against, but oh. So, that will be, that is the nature of the request, Madam Chair. I would like to ask the Assistant of Asdan, Counselor Asdan, with your explanation. Can you help me to explain?
Ah, you're not recognized yet, sit down.
One of my legal counsel. Yes, the, yes, the provision.
Yeah, yeah, you talk to me, you talk to me.
That belongs to, what?
So, meaning?
Section 5B of PD 449.
So, meaning?
Ah, D, D, R, D.
So, meaning, delay past noon, bata pa siya.
Bata pa.
Ano bang sabong mo sila, bata pa?
Okay, na manas, muna kita waste tag, kung mga, what?
Ah, bata pa. Oh, okay, okay. So, I'd like to recognize Attorney James Judith, then Counselor Gurli Balaba, okay? Go.
Madam Chair, ang katulang kang Counselor Abada, katungsa, ang special or regular cockfight, kay kumingon mong uka, regular cockfight, a cockfight held on Sundays or legal holidays. Ang special cockfight, a cockfight held on days other than Sundays and legal holidays and for special purposes herein enumerated, katodang exposition, gingon ni Counselor Abada, katungsa agrofair. So, the PD stagman siya, dili pa siya katungsa, o, sunoy, oh.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Attorney James Judith. Counselor Gurli Balaba, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wala mang good sa attachment, Counselor, no, sa tong proponent. Ang nganong sa October 7, anong unsi okasyon? Sa October 7, it's not, sa ilahang application letter, it's not stated there, so we have to be, ako, I am, I'm having my reservations, wala mang good nilaghi sulat, for what purpose?
Okay.
For what purpose?
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
Oh, we cannot put, ano?
Okay, okay, thank you, Counselor Gurli Balaba. Counselor Gurli Balaba is correct, huh? Wala gi dinig butang, to hold the first stag derby on October 7. Wala gi explanation, wala description? So, what shall we do now? Who is your lawyer? So, we should be specific. Okay, Counselor Ian Atchas, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to comment on Counselor Gurli Balaba about the date of October 7. As I understand with Madam Chair, it is no longer necessary to give reason about the date about October 7. As I understand, kining mga cockfighters, Madam Chair, nani sila specific or target date? For example, sa Biernes, murag, wala na'y trabaho ang, Madam Chair, until 8 and 9, so kay 3 days manis siya nga kuwan, mauna ang panahon nga na ay leisure time. So, probably, nga, geheld nila, gepili nila ang adlaw nga Friday, kay pagka Sabado, wala po'y trabaho then. Probably, ang Friday pod, posible pod nga, mga absent ni sila sa trabaho, Madam Chair, para lang mo join aning event. Ang kuwan lang, ang gehangyo lang karoon ang special days, kay, ah, wala sa'yan siya days nga fix, kung special permit ang gepangayo. So, probably, ang gingon lang sa special permit, it will held within 3 days sa Fiesta activity, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Ian Atchas. Counselor Gurli Balaba, you are recognized?
We cannot be speculative when it comes to, ano, kining permits, permits, no? Dapat state nila specify, nganong October 7, for what reason? Anong event? Ang, di kita mag speculate?
Thank you, Counselor Gurli Balaba. Counselor Ian Atchas, then Counselor Michael Seno. Let us remember that we have to be very specific. We cannot be talking, we cannot be negotiating without the proper documentation there is at our office. So, yes, Counselor Gurli Balaba, as stated here, wala pang gue nakabutang, only a date. Okay, so proceed, Counselor Ian Atchas.
Probably, Madam Chair, as experience sa barangay nga level, Madam Chair, ang barangay geheld me o 3 days nga cockfighting. Isa sa reason ano kay to produce income, so, Madam Chair. So, kung mag sugod o Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, ang cockfighting, probably, less lang ang mo attend. So, dili beneficial, kung unsi, dili makagain o income, mga usa ka sabungan. That's why iheld na nila, nga, by the following day, na ay mga mo sulod, or mo padala sa ilang mga cockfights, ng mga manok sulod sa sabungan. Probably, by the wisdom sa aning naghangyo, no, nga iheld. Possibly nga, apektado ang ilang income, kung iheld nila other day than Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Madam Chair. Muna ang reason siguro.
Okay, thank you, I understand. Counselor Ian Atchas. Counselor Michael Seno, you are recognized?
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Yeah, it's stated under section 5, paragraph D, agricultural, commercial, or industrial fair, carnival, or exposition for a similar period. Exposition, I may say, Madam Presiding Officer, because based on the records, they have not yet asked for stag derby. And therefore, all they have do was sak-sak sinagol, na ay katung tigulang na. I should say, katung matod pa nila nga, pwede na masugo palit o asin kay tag size annuals ng edad. Samot na kay wala na nangagamit, pila katuig, wala'y sabong. This occasion, Madam Presiding Officer, I should say, katupang mga bata. So, specific lang siya, that is why it falls under exposition in one-day setting. Based, based on section 5, paragraph D, if I may read, Madam Presiding Officer, holding of cockpits, except as provided in this decree, cockfighting shall be allowed only in a licensed cockpits during Sundays and legal holidays and during local fiestas for not more than 3 days. It may also be held during provincial, city, or municipal agricultural, commercial, or industrial fair, carnival, or exposition for a similar period of 3 days. In fact, the law says pwede tuluka adlaw, but they only ask for 1 day. Akuntan ako, Madam Presiding Officer, tungod kay paradilik matanduk ang Sabado o Domingo, because October 7 is Friday. Sabado o Domingo, mabalik sila silang old nga, pasabong sa katung tigulang na ng mga, mga manok. Friday is specific for stag derbies. Katupang mga bata nga mga manok, Madam Presiding Officer. I hope I could give some, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Michael Seno. That is, that is very simple, ano? This is very simple, no? Just send a letter again, stating that that will cover also. So, what's the pleasure of the body now? Counselor Roger Abada?
I got the letter request addressed to me, Madam Chair. This stag derby participated by the Northern Mindanao Gimfau Breeders Association. So, it's a specific, that's why they sponsor this, this day. So, as had been explained by my colleagues, I think there's nothing impediments on this request of the Indahag Square Garden. And I move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Roger Abada. Counselor Michael Seno, you are recognized?
I just so hope that next, because under the law, Madam Presiding Officer, special permit should be taken 1 month before the said date. Kay, iproceso pa ba yan? I hope next time, we will not anymore accept kung apiki kay sila magapply. This would be the last chance that they would applying for this kind of application. It's supposed to be, sibo ginawa siya 1 month, Madam Presiding Officer, kay after approval of this, maagi pa ba ya? Sa proseso, Madam Presiding Officer.
So, that's good, 1 month before, thank you. Counselor Joey Abou, please?
Just query, Madam Chair, as what was mentioned by Counselor John Michael Seno, that hopefully next time, when some someone would apply for this kind of special permit, it should be done at least a month, because that is what is stated under the law, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor? Policy? Do we have the discretion not to follow the policy or the law? That it should be made at least a month prior to the said cockfight? That's my legal query, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Joey Abou. Counselor Roger Abada, you are recognized?
That's true, 1 month, 1 month before or within 1 month. Their letter, Madam Chair and my colleague, is dated September 6, pa? September 6, so, September 7. So, more than 1 month, ang ilang letter dated September 6. So, the implication, the implication of this, Madam Chair and my colleagues, if we will defer this one, so they can no longer hold, because they already, there is a lapse of time. So, that's why you have to decide whether to pursue or not.
Okay, thank you. Is there any second motion or any objection? What is the pleasure of the body now? Counselor Edgar Cabanlas?
We approve this. The 1 day is, we can consider that as a carnival affair, because it's a Fiesta. But what comment? The suggestion that, that should be, the coming in and the grouping of these cockfighters to be considered as a convention or as an exposition, I think this is misleading. It's not good, nga, himo na to, nga, ang cockfighting, dunay convention, so, tagaan na to sila, pabor. No, but let us approve this. We can consider this as a carnival affair, naman, as a pista mani. But again, next time, let us, di lima? Again, iconsideral lang yun na to na, as a part sale activity. Sa with the carnival, 6 man na katuig, nga, ayaw pa man lakaw. So, ay na, carnival, sa kitkay, man na kabulan. Sa buma, then na tulog kabulan. So, let us just, but only for this. And I, I hope, Madam Chair, that we should not give time to discussing this, because gambling, ako, di mo ko sugarol, but it does not, no? Tagaan na to, importante niya, okay lang, kung mga, nagan mo sugarol, lar-ka.
So, again, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just 2 points. First, without debating, this cockfighting is a heritage sport. And this is what the Philippines is proud of. Only in the Philippines that we do cockfighting. Nahimo ni siyang sugal, tungod kay namang gue pusta. Para sa gapon sa other sports, just like tennis, for example. Billiard, these are sports. Mahimong sugal, tungod kay, ah, may magpusta. So, there came to a point that law has to regulate the scheduling, the management of these sports. So, that's why, that's why I really support also the conduct of this derby. Second, Madam Chair, the request letter was sent September 6. Now, of course, if you are the applicant, it should be government that provide us the checklist of the requirements. They didn't know, kailangan lang di ay, napay mga mga justifications why the permit should be granted. And it should be, it should have been at the committee level that we have required them the appropriate documents that shall be provided for by the applicant. So, murag lai man kayo nga, atong basulo ng applicante nga. September 6 pa man, Madam Chair, nga gehatag. So, as I've said, we have to approve this, because they have done the appropriate thing to do. They requested, they applied. It should be asked, that should have required them earlier, para they get my delay. Imagine September 6, karoon pa na to iapprove, Madam Chair. Ngayon ta, after the committee meeting, after submitting all the requirements, we should decide at once whether to approve or disapprove. Now, it is unfair for the applicant justified mampot, nga, di rin na to ni approve. So, I support the approval of this ordinance, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Romeo Caliso. So, there's the pending motion, any second? Any objection? Okay, abstain? Attorney, Counselor, Attorney Joey Abou and Counselor Gurli Balaba, abstain? Okay, okay, so, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Number 12, this proposed ordinance number 2022-34, approving the application of Mr. Rodrigo Gigo, President Lumbya, Pocagon Sports Arena, Loza, Barangay Lumbya, the city, for the permit to conduct a 3-win special cockfight at the said cockpit on September 22 to 21, 2022, as part of the Araw ng Lumbya activities. Claro na nun kayo? Claro kayo?
Claro siya?
We ask the Chair to recognize Counselor.
Okay, Counselor Roger Abada, you are recognized? So, claro lugar.
Considering that proposed ordinance number 2022-34 is clerics, Araw ng Lumbya, as specified, based on those provisions cited by this representation and my colleagues, I move to approve this application for special cockfight.
Any second? Second? Seconded by Attorney, Counselor Attorney Joey Abou?
First district man.
Any objection? Any objection? Okay, I hear none. Ordinance number 2022-34 is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Seconded by Attorney, Counselor Attorney Joey Abou? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
So, claro na to, ah?
Claro, ah?
Kinala specific ang atong madawat nga letter. Anyway, we have 2 additional items, Madam Presiding Officer. One is being, has been distributed by the City Secretary. One is being, has been distributed by the City Secretary as number 13. And on the 14, Councillor Roger Abadai also would like to request that we pass a resolution commending Mr. Wawawi Obshoma, Anthony Obshoma, for giving, donating 30 units of handheld radios and pila kapito?
Whistle?
Fifty, 30 pitos.
Thirty.
Whistles, whistles.
Thirty whistles.
Move for the inclusions, inclusion of items 13 and 14.
Any second? Any objection? Motion is hereby carried.
Number 13 is proposed resolution number 2022-88, electing Councillor Yevona Yaseni Ivi B. Imano as additional member of the Committee on Public Utilities, Energy and Roads and Traffic Management, amending for the purpose, resolution number 1 for 200-2022, otherwise known as the 20th City Council Committee Composition, Proponent Councillor Romeo V. Calizo. I ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Calizo.
Councillor Romeo Calizo, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The community needs brilliant ideas from young legislators like Councillor Ivi Imano. So she is most welcome to the committee, as stated. With that, Madam Chair, I move to approve such resolution.
Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? Motion is hereby carried.
For the next item, we have Councillor Roger Abadai to place the necessary motion.
Councillor Roger Abadai, you're recognized?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of resolution number, subject for styling, commending and appreciating for the Anthony Wawawi Obshoma for donating 30 handheld radios and 30 whistle for our RTE.
Okay, any second?
Move, move to approve.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
There being no pending, Madam Chair, move adjourned.
Session is adjourned. Your snacks is available.